Hello and welcome to the Planning Commission Public Meeting today. This meeting is taking place in person, streaming live via Zoom and is being recorded. For those joining us via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or device when you are not speaking. The Zoom chat feature is modified so participants may report technical difficulties. However, no public comment or questions will be taken through the chat feature. Tonight is a continued public hearing on the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update Development Regulations. We will start with roll call. The following Planning Commissioners are present in the room. Commissioner Russell, Alves, Corbin, Fritsch, Moore, and Scootley. With six Planning Commissioners present, we do have a quorum. We are now ready to begin. Chair Corbin?
Thank you Kylie. My name is Frank Corbin and I would like to call to order the August 12, 2025 meeting of Lewis County Planning Commission. Prior to tonight, the Commissioners received the agenda for today and the agenda is displayed on the screen. I would entertain a motion and a second from the Planning Commissioners to approve the agenda as presented.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you Roger. Is there a second?
No second.
Thank you Bob. Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Please signify in favor. Please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes six zero. Alright. Prior to tonight, the Commission also received the meeting notes of July 22, 2025. Are there any corrections to the meeting notes? If not, I'll entertain a motion and a second from the Planning Commissioners to adopt the minutes as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you Jason. Is there a second?
No second.
Thank you Roger. It's been moved and seconded to approve the meeting notes of July 22. All in, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes six zero. Alright, next item is public comment. I'd like to stress tonight that public comment should not contain public testimony on the issue that we're going to be discussing tonight. You are welcome to make comments on any other item that's not on the agenda tonight. So, anything related to short-term rentals, we are not taking public testimony. If you have any public comment, you're welcome to stand up and give us your three minutes. So Kimberly, did you have something besides short-term rental that you wanted to give coming up? Oh, okay. Well, we have you down anyways. That's fine. Anyone online would like to provide public comment? Please use the raise hand feature or turn on your camera and wave at me. Alright, seeing none? We'll move on then. Tonight's agenda item is a continued public hearing on the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update Development Regulations. Oral record was closed on July 8 and the written record was closed on July 21 at 4pm. Tonight, the Planning Commission will deliberate on short-term rentals and I'll turn it over to staff. Mindy?
Thank you. Good evening Commissioners. Mindy Brooks, Director of Community Development. As you said, tonight is a continued hearing on the Lewis County Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. You, at the July 22 meeting, provided direction to staff regarding how you'd like to see the codes amended. We provided your report on August 4 with the revised proposed regulations. And we also posted that online for the community. Let's move on, next slide. Oh, sorry, we'll pull the slideshow up. All the technical difficulties flusters everyone. There we go. Thank you. So go ahead and go to the next one down. Thanks. So, we've already had a lot of discussion about the short-term rentals. The background's going to be very short tonight. And then I'm going to summarize the direction that you provided the last meeting. I am not going to walk through the code line by line. I assume that you guys have read it. So I'll just summarize the changes we've made. Then we'll take a motion and then a vote if you're ready. I have put a potential motion in here that you can use. And then following that, we'll talk about the Steering Committee. Next slide. There are a lot of materials on the topic of short-term rentals. And so I included this slide just as a reminder to anybody who's watching online or watches on YouTube. These are each live. We post our presentations as well online. So these are all live links to where you can get all the background information on short-term rentals. So I just included that for anybody who wants to deep dive after this. But you guys have already received all this. Next slide. Okay, so quick background, a reminder where Planning Commission has been on this topic of short-term rentals. This discussion started back in 2022. It was the main concern that was brought up at the housing forums that were held in Packwood and was a topic identified on online surveys about housing. Those housing forums and the online survey were for the entire East End. They were not a Packwood focus, even though we held the meetings, the housing meetings there. In 2022 and 2023, the Packwood Sub area plan Community Advisory Committee discussed short-term rentals in fall of 2023. The Planning Commission held hearings on the Sub area plan and made policy recommendations around short-term rentals for Packwood. During 2024 and early 2025, we've been focused on the Comp Plan Periodic Update, which includes development regulations, including those related to short-term rentals. The Packwood Advisory Committee again made recommendations to you regarding how to regulate short-term rentals within the Packwood UGA. On May 27, the Planning Commission discussed the CAC's recommendations and directed staff to expand the regulations countywide and to consider additional regulations, including a cap on short-term rentals. On June 18, staff released a full package of development regulations. This included short-term rental regulations and we scheduled the public hearing for July 8. Testimony was taken. At the July 8 hearing, Planning Commission closed the record, continued the hearing to July 22. And at the July 22 meeting, the Planning Commission responded to testimony and provided direction to staff to revise the proposed short-term rental regulations. That's the chronology of how we got here. Next slide. So you've seen this before. This is repeat from a couple of presentations, but just a reminder that most of the short-term rentals in Lewis County are in Packwood, which does include the neighborhoods of High Valley and Timberline. And the second there is Ashford. Next slide. You've seen this as well. This is a map that shows the distribution of short-term rentals throughout the county. Highest concentrations in Packwood area and Ashford. And it, of course, there's, we know this. The reason for this is because it's tourism and these two communities are located right by Mount Rainier, Goat Rocks, White Pass ski area. So it's not surprising that that's where we have the highest concentration. Next slide. You received a lot of testimony on short-term rentals and you spent most of the July 22 meeting discussing the recommendation that you'd like to make to the board. We took a straw poll at the end of that meeting and this is what you generally agreed on during the straw poll. To require a permit to track data. No cap or ownership limits at this time. Clarify legal structure. Require approved water and septic. Require onsite parking. Require solid waste removal. Require an annual renewal. Permit should be transferable and to form a steering committee or association. So this is the direction that I took from you guys on the 22nd to make changes to the proposed code. Next slide. So let's walk through what is Attachment A of the staff report that I sent to you guys on August 4 and posted online. Chapter 17, dot 105, Short-Term Regulations is a new chapter. We do not have short-term regulations in Lewis County at this time. The only requirement right now is that you need to get a business license from the state and have insurance. So, the first big change is the direction that we have removed the 25% cap and limits on the number of short-term rentals per parcel. So any structure that qualifies can be permitted as a short-term rental, no caps. We clarified that unique structures like vintage trailers and yurts can be used as short-term rentals along with cabins, tiny homes, etc. We maintained that multifamily cannot be used as short-term rental, but added a clarification that when someone wants to have three or more detached, what would be STRs on their property, we would consider that a motel use. And so it can be permitted as long as the lodging and accommodation requirements are met for a motel use. We also clarified that a short-term rental cannot be an event venue, event venue, excuse me, unless the property is permitted as an event venue. Right? So we weren't intending that you can't have events, that you need to be permitted as such. And this was an important clarification because we have vineyards that are wedding venues and they may have a short-term rental on them and that is perfectly okay. Next slide. We maintain the requirement for approved water and septic or another approved wastewater treatment based on the capacity, design capacity of the system. We also maintained the occupancy limits of two people per bedroom plus the three additional people. Again, we clarified that you can go above that based on designed capacity of the septic system itself. We maintained the parking requirement of one onsite parking space per bedroom. We changed the solid waste requirement. We still say that there needs to be garbage service, but if there isn't garbage service available, the garbage must simply be in a secure receptacle. We removed the requirement for it to be inside, indoors. We maintained that the owner or operator needs to provide up-to-date local burn restrictions to the guests. We removed the requirement for an address or contact information to be visible from the road. Next slide. We maintained the requirement that the building needs to have a certificate of occupancy, building permit or inspection. However, we included for you guys as an attachment, what we expect the application information to have. And we will include a liability waiver option for people who are not able to get the CVO, building permit or inspection. So basically, they can take on the liability around the building themselves if they're unable to get those things. And this is for unique or very historic structures. We maintained annual self-certification, but we removed the restriction on transferring a permit. So you can transfer.
Oh, there it is. New or existing, unique, you were talking about you would make it available for these people. Is that like just for the ones that currently are there or in the future?
It could be in the future too, if somebody wanted to do something unique. You know, like I don't want to preclude a really cool treehouse, but they may not be able to pass the right inspections, but then you can take on liability so that we don't have to worry about it. Doesn't, you don't get to waive water and septic. This is just for the building itself. I think that was it. So are there any other questions about what we did to make these regulations your direction?
Do we get to discuss this now?
Next slide. So, the way that it typically works now would be that someone makes a motion in a second and then we move into deliberations where we can discuss and deliberate. Right now, I'm looking for questions about what I've presented to you. What I'm mostly looking for here is, did I get it right? Or do you have questions about how I interpreted your direction?
Yeah. Man, sure.
Yeah.
I think you got it right. I like the list. I think the only question I had is, what I read is, and maybe we're going to see that is, there was an A and B and a C and D. And that we were going to do, maybe propose two parts of this. Isn't that the way you wrote it?
Well, option, excuse me, I'm sorry, not options. Attachment A is one code chapter. Attachment B is a different code chapter, but I just summarized all of it together.
You gave us a permit concept, like a, to me, that's like what the permit could look like, right? Will there be discussion or will staff be solely responsible for what that permit ultimately ends up being? Or will there be input on that?
Yeah, staff put together the applications. All the applications for permits, staff create those applications. But I did want to include it and would welcome your thoughts on the application that staff will put together later.
Not tonight.
Yeah, it's, you know, typically, we don't talk about that. It's not something you guys have to approve. And it's something that we can change very quickly, right? It's not a codified thing. So, we'll put an application together and realize we missed something or realize we need better clarification of something and make changes to it. So it's a much more fluid and easy thing to make changes to later. But I wanted you to see it just because of that. There was that question about, well, what if I don't have a certificate of occupancy and I don't have a building permit? And this is a historic structure and its electrical is maybe not going to pass an inspection. We wanted to make sure that people can have that liability waiver option to get them through. So we're not precluding that use.
That's very dangerous. I mean, they may not even have enough insurance to cover that.
They have to have insurance as a short-term rental. And other jurisdictions we heard discussed, like I think it's Thurston simply does a liability waiver. They don't do, they don't require a certificate of occupancy.
My, my main question or concern with this right now is that a lot of the good neighbor stuff is not being, is not being addressed right now. And I feel like that's the most, one of the most important things to the community, aside from the housing stock. The health and safety stuff is like no-brainer, should already be, but great, glad. But like the, you know, in the permit concept, you have posting the burn ban is going to be a requirement. I would love to see other, like what our local quiet hours are. And the fact that the information on the outside of the house got struck, I still would like to see some kind of contact.
So I think a couple of options around this. One, we could go ahead and make a motion around this. And then have a conversation about, do you guys want to add back in some of the language that we struck? Or different language around good neighbor that we struck? The other option around this issue of good neighbor stuff is through the steering or advisory committee approach. And so if...
Which we don't know how far out that might be.
Right, so, maybe. I don't know. So I removed that from the conversation because that isn't something that you guys would typically like vote on, but you guys are certainly making a recommendation and I would include that in the transmittal to them about how you feel and what this steering committee should address and how it should work. But I'm going to leave it up to you guys. We can put good neighbor stuff in the code or not. We had good neighbor stuff in the code. We struck all of it except for, you know, your basic like parking and solid waste. But if you have Attachment A in front of you, you can still see that we, where we struck it. So during deliberations, if you want to amend, put some stuff back into the code, we could.
I see that, you know, our role is more policy setting, you know, and recommendation to the county commissioners to adopt code, but it's up to staff to implement the codified laws of the county commissioners. And so, I think with my original proposal, a lot of the weight of the good neighbor policies was supposed to be placed on the advisory committee or the association. And the only thing that, you know, taking what Gretchen just said into my mind is we need to get that association up and running sooner rather than later. And then, you know, ask them to really work on those good neighbor policies first. That would be my...
Yeah, so, yeah, so what I would suggest here, because we're kind of moving into a deliberation field rather than just questions about what I've presented to you, is to go ahead and move and take a motion. And a second, and it is perfectly fine if what you move in second, you amend or you decide to rescind and start over and all of that. So Kylie, would you go to the next slide for us?
I'd, I'd like to have a conversation. So I'd like to make this motion.
Sure.
And have a conversation.
She wanted to make.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Well, if you make this motion and then we do...
I move to recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve the amendments to Lewis County Chapter 17.105 and definition of short-term rentals as presented in Attachments A of the August 4 staff report and to use the state's definition of short-term rentals.
A second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to move, to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners to approve the amendments to Lewis County Chapter 17.105 and the definition of short-term rental is presented in Attachment A of the August 4 staff report and to use the state's definition of short-term rentals. Is there any discussion?
I sure hope so. I'd like to add a word in here.
Well, you have, you were one of the first. Everybody gets a turn. Alright, Jeff, go ahead. You're next.
Yeah, I have some basic issues. Two mainly, the codes we haven't discussed at any great length. And one of those is Attachment A, I'm assuming, is the Growth Management Act where it eliminates the 180-day requirement. And that opens up multiple buildings. I mean, you could have a motel six in your neighbor's backyard with no regulations. And the second are the choices that we should be making and we have not discussed.
So what you are voting on is Attachment A. And you've had that in front of you since June 18th, when I gave you the development of regulations to review. And so you should be reading those in detail and asking me questions in detail about the code and holding your conversations about the code.
Just for the record, you and I have been emailing back and forth, non-stop for almost a week.
Absolutely. But that's what I'm saying is, Attachment A is what you are voting on and you guys have had it in front of you and you have been digging in on it. Now, the 180-day issue. If you would like, as a commission, to restrict such that short-term rentals cannot be used for more than 180 days as rentals within a calendar year, you may do that.
I don't think the rest of the Commissioners know what that means, what we're talking about. I really don't.
Okay. What you are specifically talking about, there's two different things. And this is what we've been going back and forth about. There is building code and different standards that need to be met in the building code, depending on how much something is used. Right? And so it kicks up a different requirements, usually around fire standards and so forth.
Called owner occupancy.
Right? So it's a, so they're building code standards. And one of those has to do with using a structure for more than 180 days within a calendar year. So more than six months of the calendar year is a rental.
The owner has to stay in the house for 180 days or more.
Right. So the, we are using the same definition. I've said the state's definition of short-term rentals up here.
Sideways. The state through the Growth Management Act has eliminated the 180-day rule. And people can now have multiple properties.
So why have they done, right?
And they can own multiple properties in different locations. You could have a motel right next to your house.
Absolutely. And why they did that is because what the 180 days ties to a building code standard. And that doesn't change regardless of the 180-day thing. There's a zoning code question. This is left up to you policymakers to decide. Do you care if a property owner rents out their properties as short-term rentals for more than 180 days during a calendar year? The building code stuff still is in place.
A property owner cannot do that. According to the International Building Code or the Washington State Building Code, the owner must stay in that house for more than 180 days, not rent out for more than 180 days.
Okay, so you and I are just going to be in disagreement about that. That is not true.
I can, I can show you copy after copy.
It's, that's about the building code and not the zoning code. And it is okay for someone to rent more than 180 days without the owner being in it. You don't have to live in this structure to rent it out as a short-term rental.
That is a new code from the Growth Management Act that just came into effect.
So...
And that changes everything we've been talking about and we have not talked about it.
Okay, so are other people in confusion about this? That, it is very clear in the state law that you can use a short-term rental. You do not have to live in it. Nobody has to live in the short-term rental. That has been true during this whole entire conversation. Did anybody think that they had to live in the short-term rental in order to use it as a short-term rental?
No.
Owner occupancy?
I don't think anybody else had that confusion.
I've seen that come up in other jurisdictions when they're regulating, when they're deciding what regulations to place. Like Leavenworth, I think, will only allow short-term rentals in the town of Leavenworth if you live on the property. But that was their, that was their version.
That's their policy decision and it is not something that we have to do. People absolutely can rent structures as short-term rentals without living in them. That is not a requirement under state law. And it, but however, you guys can impose limits on days of stay if you, as a policy decision and you're welcome to do that, if that is important to you. We also allow, just as a matter of policy in residential neighborhoods, you can't have a hotel or motel use. You already approved the standards around that. It's through a special use permit. So we do allow other high-density stuff that you guys have reviewed and recommended. So if, it just, it's, again, this is up to you guys. I'm just providing the summary of the information.
I think as a matter of, of, you know, policy, I mean, we can recommend whatever we want. And I don't see a need, I don't see an emergency to regulate, you know, the number of days that an owner, property owner has to live in a property before they can use it as a short-term rental. So what emergency are you trying to, you know, what kind of a fire are you trying to put out?
I'm not. I'm trying to get some rationale in here. Many of the citizens came to us and spoke that they didn't want their neighborhoods, residential neighborhoods, taken over by hotels and motels. It's a big issue in many areas. Other neighbors came and said, well, we need the short-term rentals. That's also a big issue. So, you know, my little proposal is that we find a happy medium and solve the problem without putting a limit on the number, or the cap on the number of units. I went through 20, 22 different jurisdictions. Only two have caps. You know, four outright, 17 had some variation with, without a cap, but...
Yeah, we don't have a cap in our proposal. So, no, we took that out. I'm just talking, we took that out. But of the 22, only two had caps, but...
So are you, you're proposing to cap the number of days that each short-term rental can be used?
Long story short, my little suggestion is that we select the best place for a short-term rental to be, not the worst place, worst place being your neighborhood area.
So just to be extremely clear, if we were to prevent short-term rentals from within those residential neighborhoods?
Not prevent. Put a limit on the number of days. 17 of the other cities in the state did similar things.
So that's the question. Do you guys want to put a limit on the number of days? Well, I'm asking, I'm asking the rest of you. I would like to hear from the rest of you. Would you like to entertain a limit on the number of days that people can use their short-term rentals?
Let's go around the room, Bob.
No. And then I have other things I'd like to say too. Not at this time.
Jason?
No. And, and I would just add that it seems like everybody that we talk to doesn't think that they can rent it out because of the rental season for the whole year anyway. So it seems like an issue that doesn't exist that we'd be trying to solve by regulating kind of needlessly. So I don't, I don't know what the issue would be with that. It seems like it's basically handling itself at this point.
Gretchen?
Um, I think, back to the data thing, Jeff. I, I think if we were to look at how many days each short-term rental were rented, even if it's every weekend of the year, I think you're still only looking at like 30%. Something like that. But it feels like a hotel. Even if it's only one day a week, someone new coming in. So the feeling is there, but I don't think that the number of days has, is gonna be the thing that like mitigates that.
Sorry. The rest of my idea, that's half, the first half, is no, no transfer on those neighborhoods.
Okay, that's another issue. Can we finish with Roger, please?
I didn't have anything else to add. I'm with the majority.
Okay, and I think once we've collected more data, you know, from our permit process and everything, we might be able to address that issue later if, if there's an emergency that we need to deal with. Go ahead. You're next, Asher.
Well, yeah, what, what the other cities have done jurisdictions is they have an overlay zone where they have chosen it's more appropriate to have short-term rentals. And they, they limit by not having the transferable portion. So if you have a short-term rental in your family, you can stay there forever. But if you try to sell it... But if you try to sell it, there are people currently that have multiple short term rentals, and they don't even live in their buildings. And it's become very popular. It's become a big issue all over the state, not just here.
Can I ask you a question about what, if you were to propose where we put an overlay where it's more appropriate to have these, where would you put those?
No, I was just getting, I have no idea. I don't live there. So the two obvious suggestions were the High Valley and what was the other one?
That would be where it would be appropriate to have those?
That, I don't know the area. We need information is my point.
That's the purpose of the data collection.
Right.
I think we're gonna know a whole lot more.
Make a decision before we get the data.
We're not making a decision on those. What we're doing is tabling those particular issues until we have a permit in place and gather the data.
My understanding too is that once we have that just numbers, then we can start to see like, wow, this is a problem. What do we do like after we gather that? And then, then we might be able to talk about what, you know, specifics.
Yeah, as long as we can, you know, make these decisions later with some information, I'm happy. But I, I don't want to just say, yeah, let's do this, or no, we don't want to do that.
Just.
In order to gather the local data, we have to require a permit, and it has to have some standards, and that's what I've proposed so far to you.
And that's exactly what we asked for last meeting. Okay, any other discussion?
Yes.
Bob?
Thank you. That was way too long to get more discussion going on this thing. I think a lot of people have given us a lot of input, pros and cons. We've been talking about two or three years. Thank you, Mindy. I love the chronology because it clearly says that we've looked at this a lot. I have heard said that, show me what you measure and I'll show you what you care about. And so here we're getting ready to measure. You're doing exactly what we said last week. Thank you. You've put together a great package. This was supposed to be really quick. I thought it was gonna be really quick. I do want to acknowledge, so we're gonna measure all this data. I want to acknowledge, however, another commissioner here that, that is, has some concern that we're kicking the can down the road. If anybody missed what I said, I'm clear about this. We're gonna do something. We're gonna get some data. I'm gonna do something. Somebody's gonna come back to me and say, you're gonna, it'll either be the people deciding it themselves or somebody getting angry, but, you know, we'll give this a shot. And that's the way I think you've written it. And but yeah, something's gonna get done. Do you, do you believe me?
I do. I'm just nervous that it. It's not happening fast enough. I guess I'm being impatient.
Welcome to government.
I wanted, I really wanted last week to come in. You guys know me, action oriented. But I think Frank started a couple of weeks ago, a nice discussion that said the data's not really there. We get the data, and it's gonna be really easy to make those decisions. But hopefully, you know, people are fixing things along the way. It's such a beautiful community. I was just saying, I was there in the last couple of weeks. I hope it all works out.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, any other discussion?
I have one thing, clarifying point, Mindy. On that list of documents that were part of this and are on the record, that housing needs assessment, was that the countywide one, or was that the Packwood specific one?
We're putting both in to the supporting documentation for the comprehensive plan periodic update. And then in our housing needs assessment, I've asked them to add a reference to that particular one for Packwood, just to make sure it's very clear that that is official information that we're using. So.
I, I just do want people to, to realize that there was a point in time survey study done on the housing issue in Packwood three years ago, and there are numbers from that. So it would be quite interesting to have that same study done again, see what has changed.
Yeah, that says. What's that?
You did have a pie, you had, it was quick, that slide, but you had what they were in twenty twenty-two and what they are now.
Yeah, Kylie, do you want to slide back up to the diagram that had the pie chart on it? There we go. Yeah, what was most compelling to me about the housing needs assessment was really around housing instability, particularly for kids and seniors. That was, it's been a number of years since you guys have had that in front of you. We did present it to you guys, but it's been a while. But it really, it really lent a lot of that into that conversation of why we need multifamily housing and why we need sewer and all that kind of conversation. And short term rentals are not, are not gonna help with that. I think the short term rental conversation, I think that where it correlates with this is where we're looking at conversion of housing stock. And so getting our hands around what is occurring from a data standpoint in our communities around conversion with the data we collect with the permit should be able to help us better understand that and inform our conversations down the road.
Are we gonna have that conversation done, or can we talk about housing stock at some point?
Yeah. When would you like to talk about it?
You know me, I contact.
Because we are darn near done at this point with this.
You know, and I understand, and the baseball game is probably still on, so.
Yeah, I think we can table that to one of our upcoming meetings, but I'm with Bob. I think, you know, this should, you know. Okay, as, as chair, one of the things that, that I have to do is I have to balance keeping business moving along and at the same time giving everybody a voice. And I have worked really hard to try to make sure that everybody's voice is heard because I respect each one of you, and each one of you bring a very good perspective to this board. And, you know, while we might not always understand where somebody's coming from and the questions that are being asked, everybody deserves to ask those questions. And so that's what I really tried to do. Now I think it's time for us to take a vote.
Kylie, would you just slide back to the motion really quick? And then go ahead.
Okay, and so without objection, I'm gonna call for the vote. Okay, the motion on the floor is a motion was made to recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve the amendments to Lewis County Chapter seventeen point one oh five and the definition of short term rental as presented in attachment A of the August fourth staff report and to use the state's definition of short term rentals. It was moved and seconded. We've had discussion, and I'm ready to call for the vote. So I'm gonna do a roll call vote. And I'm gonna start with Roger. Roger, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, Gretchen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes six zero. Okay.
So I've got, yeah, I've just got a quick slide on next steps.
Sure.
For this, so everybody knows what's happening next. First, I just want to throw in, thank you guys. This has been a big conversation. This is a complicated conversation. This is not the last time we're gonna talk about it. I appreciate how thoughtful all of you are in this conversation. You listen to everybody, you listen to the community. You had good conversation about it, so just deep appreciation for the work you've put in here. So staff will prepare the letter of transmittal for Chair Corbin to sign. We'll transmit it with the comp plan periodic update package to the Board of County Commissioners. We have tentatively scheduled workshops with B O C C on August twentieth, twenty-seventh, and September tenth. So workshops are just like your workshop. We're presenting the materials. They're asking questions. They're not taking votes. There's no testimony at workshops. Those are at their meetings, which those are Wednesday workshops, which means that they are at the director's meeting, ten AM on Wednesdays. I don't remember which time those meetings are at. Double check the calendar, make sure I got that right. We haven't set the public hearing date. It'll be in September. We're competing with all day budget sessions in September, so we're working on a date for that, but we will get that set. The hearing is, is humongous. It's gonna be one hearing on the comp plan goals and policies, the zoning map designations, and the development regulations. Everything you guys have done to date gets one hearing at the Board of County Commissioners. It is massive.
Wow.
Right?
That's why what we do is so important.
You guys are where we make the changes. You guys are where we dig into the details, so that's why your job is so critical here. Yes. So yes, public will have an opportunity to provide written and oral testimony. Anyone who's listening, I encourage you to provide testimony, even if you already did. You can always comment that you want additional changes to the zoning or development regulations before they are adopted. But if you support the planning commission's recommendations, that is also very useful for the board to hear. So I encourage that everybody send testimony in. If you're not already on my mailing list and you're listening in and you want on my mailing list, let me know so I can get you added, so you'll make sure you'll get quick notification as things change. That is it.
Would it be helpful for any of us to be at the workshops?
Um, yes, that would be very, very helpful. Thank you. I totally forgot that we wanted to have that conversation. Okay, back up. I, yes, would very much like to have two representatives come to, not all three workshops, but to at least the workshops where we talk about the development regulations. I think we will talk about short term rentals on September tenth. We'll talk about the other development regulations on the August twenty-seventh meeting. So I guess what I would like is if you guys, if somebody would like to volunteer, if you would like to vote to appoint a couple of people, what I was really hoping is to have Gretchen come and talk about short term rentals as our short term rental representative. And what you're doing is you're representing the planning commission's position, right? You're not testifying as a you. You're representing planning commission, but you're saying it through, through your lens, so they're not just hearing it from me, which is really helpful. So I'd love for Gretchen to come and talk about short term rentals. It'd be great if somebody else who wanted to come and talk about any of the other stuff we've done. Remember, we've done a lot of stuff. We did energy code. We did signs. We did changes to the U G A plans, I'm sorry, the U G A small town zoning regulations. So if anybody else is interested in coming and helping talk about that, I'm, I'd love that.
Would you like two people at each of those meetings or just?
I don't think we need anybody at August twentieth. I'm gonna have our consultant be the primary one presenting on that because that's goals and policies, and they really did that work. So it would be at August twenty-seventh and September tenth.
I can make the twenty-seventh, but I have a question. And as far as next steps, how do we, and maybe it's in there somewhere. Is somebody gonna come back in six months and say, hey, they have formed that committee in Packwood and the short term rental people are hot on this and?
Yeah, let's talk about, let's talk about steering committee next after. Yeah, 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 let's do that. Let's have a conversation about that next. Yeah.
Okay, so I have Bob down for August twenty-seventh. Anybody else interested in August twenty-seventh?
I could probably do that one.
Okay.
Okay, so I will coordinate with you two about the presentation and what you guys would like to talk about. Yeah. I will, yeah. Yeah, pick a couple that you're interested in giving some presentation about. Bob, I'm gonna tap you too when we come back around on critical areas, but that's not up here yet.
We're in there talking till month twenty-sixth.
Oh, okay. And then Gretchen, are you able to join us on September tenth, do you think? Okay.
I'd like to join in on that one too.
Okay, great.
I do have one question.
Go ahead.
Yeah. When will we discuss short term rentals?
Short term rental what?
If you remember, I emailed you and asked if we were gonna discuss short term rentals tonight.
We just did. You just passed the regulations to move on to the Board of County Commissioners.
We didn't even discuss any of the things you and I talked about. When, when are we going to have a discussion about Packwood or, or other areas on short term rentals and what to do about it?
I guess I'm really confused by what you're asking. We just passed onto the Board of County Commissioners regulations so that we're gonna do permitting with some basic requirements.
Then we're gonna get information back, and we're gonna make some discussions and have some decisions.
That will be down the road after we gather the data.
My question.
Oh, okay.
What sort of changes can we make then?
Well, I think we'll have to wait to see what the data comes in and says at that point. So then, and then we will have a conversation about what you want to do with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we can change things later.
I would foresee needing about two years of data before you guys are ready to make any kind of a decision.
Oh.
All right. We're gonna talk here in just a minute.
About the steering committee.
Yeah, it's handy, right? On the same page.
All right, so let's take a vote to approve Bob and Jason for August twenty-seventh, and Gretchen and Frank and Jeff, if you can make it, September tenth.
I'm good on the tenth.
All right, consensus thumbs up? Okay.
Okay, so I will coordinate with you guys and just. Yeah, so just to be very, very clear, you are representing the planning commission's position, not your own position. If you want to represent your own position, that is completely different. This is not a you. This is a planning commission.
That's why I asked, when can we talk about things?
So steering committee, so I, Frank had proposed a steering committee idea before us, which I think was a great idea, really well received, especially on the community to have put something together. I did a little quick scour to find who else has a steering committee, and I found one in Placer County that seemed like it had some guidelines that are pretty close. I threw that out to you guys. So what I wanted to hear from you guys today on a steering committee is a little bit more about what you want to recommend to the board. So we don't need to get into the nuts and bolts of it, but I feel like everybody here agrees that there should be some kind of committee formed, and it should be a committee that is run by the county and has representation across the board from the community out there. What else do you want to tell the board about this committee? And I think Gretchen had some, like, what they should be doing. What should this committee be doing?
Well, I guess just help come up with the, the good neighbor agreements that, that get everybody on the same page, like, like the Ashford HOAs have a really great handle on how everybody's going to act and do business in that community. So I, I would love to see that be a topic of agreement countywide.
And I wanted to make sure too that this didn't become another HOA. But this actually becomes a, a community association for short term rentals. So it's specific. It's limited in scope, and it's not gonna tell you what color to paint your house. Okay?
I didn't go over real well previously.
Jeff, do you have any comments about the association?
I just lost that thought. Thanks. Location, is there, is there some sort of idea that there would be a good location for a zoning overlay?
You want them to discuss that?
The steering committee.
Can I lump that into more generalized? You'd like them to discuss if future regulations, additional regulations are necessary and what those would look like?
Okay.
Um, I'm in a, can I, can I, yeah, I have a prompt for Gretchen, but Bob had something.
I really, like you, I really thought there was energy there. And it's more, to me, it's more the community should be making recommendations to us as to what they want going forward. All I'm saying is, given nothing, something's gonna get decided, right? The data is gonna get used by us if people are screaming and will make decisions but, or recommendations, but it would be much nicer if the community who knows their business just tells us the way they want it done.
Yeah.
I think we're gonna get that, quite frankly.
Absolutely.
Um, I had a quick prompt. Did you want to talk a little bit about a phone call, a phone number that people can call? We talked about, you and I talked about the idea of a steering committee also maybe being responsible for a complaint line, and I don't know if you wanted to say something about that.
Yeah. Not much more, but I do, that is, that is, that is a core concern of mine, that, that the neighbors of the short term rentals have a voice and have an avenue for action to be taken. I think that the short term rental owners would appreciate knowing that their guests are being jerks as well, and then they can give them a bad review and like, because they're, they operate in that way as well. So it's, I mean, we, we don't have that. I mean, there's a ton of like Airbnb coming down on the owners, but like, I feel like I want more done to the guests.
Yeah, it's their fault, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was definitely.
Yeah, that was definitely one of the components to the association idea.
Maybe that maybe there's a line that people agree to staff once a month or so. I don't know. I have no idea.
Yeah.
That would be where the addresses are kept. It's not public, but you call this phone number and they can access the database and get ahold of the owner like that.
Yeah. So right now I've got committee with broad representation run by the county but limited in scope. Their immediate things would be a complaint, phone line, good neighbor rules, and to consider future regulations.
You said committee run by the county.
Like housed underneath of the county.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be a standalone. Sanctioned.
Sanctioned by the county.
If nobody volunteered to work on that committee and we collected data over the next two to three years and people were still angry, we'll make some decisions then.
You are not wrong. If if everybody says, never mind, we don't, we don't want to be in a committee. We don't want that.
We'll take care of it.
We'll still take the data and we will have a conversation later.
But we heard the public testimony that said people were volunteering. They were lining up. Okay, so I'm holding him. I'm holding him to it.
Yeah, just as an aside, I talked with Doyle and he is one of his concerns was garbage. It really is a problem, he says.
Yes, that's part of the regulations you just passed.
Okay. Are we ready to move on? Okay, Mindy, did you have anything else on this before I go to good of the order?
No.
All right.
Good of the order.
All right, nothing for good of the order from staff? Are there any items from the?
I do have good of the order.
Oh, you do have.
I do.
Okay.
And Kylie's going to bring it up here. So we used to do quarterly reports for you guys on permits. And we stopped doing that during periodic update because I felt like I was just bombarding you guys with way, way too much information. So I'm going to let her get it pulled up here and I'll go into it. So those of you who have been on planning commission for at least two years back before periodic update will recognize what I'm going to show you, but I wanted to go over this. We used to do this quarterly. So this is all the building permits for the past five years. And what this shows you is that we are on a steep downward spiral. We're getting far fewer permits in. We also got far for fewer permits in last year. And we are below last year. So we are down considerably, the number of permits that are coming in. Next slide. This is just a breakdown of the type of building permits that we get. So it's just this was a question I think Lori had asked at one point of well, what are all the permits for and what are the most permits? And so this is a breakdown of the past few years and the permits that we get. The vast majority, obviously, are single family residential. Yep. Lots of structures. Yep, miscellaneous is a million different things.
Can I ask a quick question?
Of course, we can go back to the other slide, too.
This is permit submittals, applications for permits or issued permits?
No, these are all submittals.
Okay.
I have a little bit of data on issued in a minute, but this is the submittals that come in.
Yeah, my question was, okay, so we're we've trended down, you know, what are the causes? And does that mean then that those that are submitted are getting processed quicker?
I'll talk about timeline in just a second. So causes, I mean, I am not an economist. But it's a little rough right now with interest rates and cost of, you know, all kinds of things have gone up. There's I'm sure a million reasons why we're seeing such low permits. Insecurity.
Regulations.
Yeah. Can I speak in here?
What?
Yeah.
We have a question about what we're talking about.
We're talking about this right now.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thanks. Jeez, I did speak with the Building Industry Association of Washington at great length several times. And there are three main causes for exactly what you're talking about, but they're not politically correct, shall I say. Starting at the bottom is six and a half month delay on the permits.
We don't have that. I'm going to show you the permitting data in a second.
Statewide.
That's not that's not our reason.
Statewide. Not issuing enough permits. Again, it's a lack of land not being turned over.
And that's also not an issue that we face here.
Okay, the other one is medium home sales price in the state at six hundred ninety thousand dollars.
That's a huge issue.
It's a huge issue. And then the inflation and interest rates, the taxes alone are just put people out of it.
Yep. So other than energy code, which was a state change, we haven't changed any of our regulations in the past five years around these issues. So the fact that we've trended down the past two years is not based on regulatory changes other than the energy code, which is a state change. So look at our timelines in the next slide. So we've we've been tracking our stuff for years and nothing really has changed about our timelines, but I we started tracking them very aggressively based on Senate Bill fifty two ninety, which puts state guidelines or state timeframes for decision on planning permits. They don't apply to building permits. They only apply to planning permits. So they're not anything that's not under planning. So to your building, your road approach, water availability, onsite septic, those do not fall under Senate Bill fifty two ninety. But we still track and try and turn things over quickly. So you can see in this table, I'll just take the first one, master site reviews. We process a lot, five hundred fifty one. That's actually very low compared to what we've processed in the past few years. Our completeness review. So when you turn in an application, we have twenty eight days to determine if the application is complete, meaning that you've given us everything that we need. In that timeframe, if if we find that you haven't, we pause the clock and ask you to give us what we need. And then when we get it, we pick the clock back up. You can see for MSRs, we're turning over in a day completeness review, less than a day. And then permit review itself is then, once we've determined it's complete, we actually do the review and issue the permit. So this is only on issued permits. This data. So for for master state reviews, it takes us eight days. We have sixty five in the to do them. We do them in eight days. So if you just go through, you can see what we've processed. We haven't had any shorter or long plats that we've approved as of yet. So those that data is not in there. But we are well under the state guidelines for timeframe, our building permits. We are turning over in eleven days right now. Now, this data, it we are faster at this moment because our numbers are down, but this is not off. It once we get up to four weeks for a turnover, we start to get really concerned about our own timelines and we start looking at how to redistribute work. We consider six weeks unacceptable. So here, I mean, unless something's going on in a particular permit and that happens where things are really tough, we turn things over extremely quickly and within our timeframes. So we don't believe that we have a timeframe issue here in Lewis County at all. Right? I think a lot of our issues around regulations are state issues that we need to resolve at the state level. Well, they have no bearing on. I mean, we have our own. We have our own Washington state code, building code. So. Yeah, so I just wanted to share this data with you. I will go back to quarterly updates. So you guys get this. So you see this quarterly.
Thank you, Mindy. Anything else for good of the order?
That's it for me.
Okay, are there any items from the planning commissioners for good of the order? Okay, hearing none. There will be no planning commission meetings on August twenty second, excuse me, twenty sixth, September ninth or September twenty third. We're taking a break. The next planning commission meeting will be on October fourteenth and the agenda items will be a workshop on the critical areas ordinance. Bob, you will be up and at the plate. Staff, are there any other items for that meeting?
No.
All right. Are there any commissioners that will not be present at the October fourteenth meeting? All right, hearing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No one.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Great work. I have tried. I have tried.